Ms. Shendefell will not be here tonight. Dr. Prosska?
Here.
Mr. Arcury?
Here.
Mr. Steigl?
Here.
Mr. Cozer?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Ross? Here. Okay, prior to this evening's meeting, we did have an executive session that began at seven o'clock to discuss legal matters, so that's why we're a little bit late here to start. Please rise for the pleasure of the audience.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes. So, second, there's going to be further additions, corrections. If you all in the room say aye.
Aye.
It is six-nothing. Special reports. Looks like we have three items on our special reports.
Yes, I just wanted to take an opportunity to recognize the efforts of the Park and Recreation Department. You know, on June 11th, they re-instituted the Peters Township Farmer's Market. It's located in the parking lot, and it's immediately adjacent to the rec center. It's been extremely well received, both in terms of attendance and also the vendors are quite pleased with what's occurring there. It's anchored by Simmons Farm, who has fresh produce out there. This Wednesday was actually kind of interesting because one of the ideas that the Park and Recreation Department decided to implement was to give children an opportunity to sell their wares. So, we have 11 younger entrepreneurs who will be out there this Wednesday participating in the Farmer's Market. The other thing that was most impressive about June 11th was not only did they take on this new program and started in the afternoon, at lunchtime, there was a senior citizen picnic in the park which they hosted, and then in the evening, in the early evening, there was a puppet show inside the park. The Park and Rec Department, the people there are just doing an amazing job, and the amount of programming for the benefit of the community that they're producing is truly remarkable. The other one that I wanted to bring to your attention is the summer reading program at the library. You know, there are 900 library visitors who came to kick off the summer reading program, and on that particular day, there were 1,500 items or more checked out from the library. They have a kind of a reading, summer reading challenge. 650 people have taken that challenge, and it's all ages. And what Lacy was telling me this morning is they're checking out 1,000 items a day out of the library as part of that challenge. And, you know, that's one thing about Peter's Township, I think it values education, and this is just an extension of that. One of the reasons why I think this program has kicked off in such a strong fashion is that the professional staff from the library have made it their point to reach out to all of the elementary schools, and as a result of that, I think there's a connection there that's a little stronger than it's been in the past, so I think they're to be congratulated for what they have done. With that, one of the things, when I move on to the library's space assessment findings, in early, in early 2022, the library completed its first-ever strategic plan, and one of the goals that was established in that plan was to adapt the library's physical space to meet the organization's evolving needs. And in support of that goal, council, in conjunction with the Library Foundation, agreed to fund a space utilization assessment. So what we're here today is to review the findings from that assessment. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lacy.
Nope, we're going to turn it over to Renee. All right, oh, thanks, Paul. Hi, everyone. Renee Downing with HBM Architects, and with me is James Shook. And we're just going to do a brief overview of some of the items that are in your docket packet about what we looked at, which we'll see in greater detail when conducting the assessment of the library building. So we have quite a few items in your packets that are related to input gathering, how the building is currently used, projected use, peer comparison data with other library systems in the area that are considered peers, and also looking at the existing conditions with ideas for improvement, which we'll dive into in a little more detail, and some initial cost projections. All right. So some of the main things that came out of this were really the need for expansion of the services that the library provides to the community, as Paul mentioned, in support of a lot of educational initiatives as well. So to do that, we're looking at ways to expand youth services, ways to really reconfigure the space to improve access for large print collections, and make it a more comfortable experience for seniors who might have mobility issues, as well as adding more study rooms, expanding maker space services, really diving in both to the things that people are coming to the library. Oh, this is on, there we go. Both responding to traditional library services, checking out books and materials, but also modern services that are needed, including those study spaces, adding flexibility, additional access to power, things that are really doable improvements to the building to really, you know, make it more inviting and more welcoming to more users. But we could see from our summary of input gathering, we had more than 240 participants responded to a survey and our in-person work sessions, that really there was a need to continue to be community-centered, respond to growing population size, and diversity of need. So with that, this was, there we go, we did take a look at the user data, both pre and post pandemic, to really get a sense of how the building's being used. In addition to these larger spaces, where we looked at door counts, program attendance, circulation stats, we also looked, sorry, I'm having trouble with the clicker. All right. We also looked at how space is allocated throughout the building. So this is just one example of the many diagrams and graphs you have in the docket. This shows how square footage is devoted to different parts of the collection, with a pie chart at the bottom, and the other charts show how over time, use of those collections has shifted. And so as we look at reconfiguring, you know, the library building working within the existing walls, it's really about bringing services more up-to-date to what the community is looking for out of the library building. And as I mentioned, we also conducted a peer comparison with other neighboring systems throughout Pennsylvania. The main objectives here are looking at serving a similar population size, similar square footage of library space, and also annual revenue, so that we're really looking for libraries operating in a similar fashion to Peters Township. All right. And then, as was mentioned, the assessment was also conducted, both the overall interior space, we know the mechanicals were recently replaced, those are in good condition, but we took a deep dive at library furniture, looking at the condition of tables, chairs, shelving, book display units. And a lot of these pieces were original to the building, and they're showing their age and their use. There wasn't anything that was egregious, but things that are probably due for an update and just better coordination with some of the newer items that are in the building. And then also an overall functional assessment of how the building is working as a public library, in terms of, again, providing those more modern services and things that the community's looking for. So entry experience, what people see when they walk in the front door. Is this someplace you'd want to visit? Can you easily navigate the space to find what you're looking for? Is it easy to find staff and access to technology, whether that's through fixed computer provided by the library, somewhere to plug in a personal device, or access to the maker space? So these are all things I'm not going to dive in too deeply, but ways to look at, you know, functionality and what's currently available, and really embracing the idea that what we heard from our input gathering was, you know, really making clear that the library's about a lot more than just books. And so, you know, adjusting that mindset to, you know, how much of the digital collection is being used. But you have this great building that's really a community center. We saw the family Lego program tonight while we were in the building, and it's just really exciting to see, you know, that kind of gathering and use of the building. And yes, there's a lot of circulation of materials, especially youth services materials for summer reading, overall for children's use, but as you get into other types of collections, you know, how do you then repurpose the space into those other things that you need beyond books? So that's really what this study's about. And with that, I'm going to start to look at ideas for reconfiguring the building. So some of those key points, you can see the first floor, this is a bubble diagram, how to expand youth services, relocate the teen area so that it's not shoved in the back but easier for staff to monitor and for teens to access without going all the way through children's, creating youth program space, updating the meeting room kitchen so that could be used also for programming, you know, really providing a true family restroom accessible for children, bringing those large print collections down to the first floor with comfortable seating for older patrons. So little things that you can implement to really improve, you know, services and bring the building up to date. Oh, sorry, I skipped one. All right. And on the second floor, adding those study spaces, expanding local history to have a digitization lab, again, providing the things that people are looking to have in their library building that aren't currently available. Also looking at more mobile shelving collection so that you have the opportunity to have programs and other flexibility of space on the second floor without needing necessarily an enclosed room. So really opening up that floor, both for visibility but also in terms of use, putting more seating along the windows, repurposing that existing meeting room in the corner. So we're really looking at reconfiguration, reuse, but modernization at the same time. And then into more refined floor plans. So here you can start to see the articulation of walls, windows. You'll see when we look at the first floor that we're looking at reconfiguring where the service point is in youth services, so that as you walk in, you're greeted by a staff member who has great visibility to both sides of that space, a little bit different from how it is now, and that expansion of the fiction and large print collection moving down at the bottom of the floor plan. Part of this, we also show a lot of mobile displays, so really having something that's coordinated, but that can be used to recreate that entry experience in a more holistic fashion. Sorry, Paul, I'm just pointing at you.
That's okay.
And then on the second floor, keeping that nonfiction area, that quiet corner the way it currently is, but creating more study rooms that are dispersed so that we can recapture some of that space along the walls for seating, and also a needed staff work area, get the staff off the main floor into their own space. Is there anything else on the list? No, I have a lot of numbers and stuff, but that's okay. All right. So we pass this to Jamie to talk about the touchy part.
Okay, so when we looked at how to assign cost to all this and establish a budget on what this construction might cost, we looked at each of the areas and the level of renovation that each of the areas might take. Some areas require very little work, some areas require a little bit more extensive work, but in this example, on the first floor, that lighter blue represents what we're calling a half-dollar sign level of renovation, so there's very minimal work in that area. It's more reconfiguration of furniture and moving things around, maybe a coat of paint. This floor doesn't have a $1 sign, but the beige-y color there, we've assigned $2 signs, so that'd be a little bit more work. It might be new flooring, along with the reconfiguration of furnishings, there might be some minor electrical work and things that go along with that. There's a $3 sign that doesn't occur on this floor, but then the $4 sign is the more extensive renovation. In this case, that's the kitchen area off the meeting room, it's going to require some plumbing reconfiguration, mechanical work, a little bit more involved. So each of those dollar signs represents a different level of renovation, and we assigned a different cost per square foot for each of those areas. So then this is the second floor, and I should say, the first floor was really defined as phase one. We're looking at doing this project in two different phases. So phase one is limited to that first floor, where phase two is the second floor. Here, you see the majority of the floor is assigned the $1 sign, so that's a fair amount of renovation, but not extreme, so we've assigned that $1, and that's through the majority of the second floor. The $2 sign gets into, we're building a couple of walls, maybe doing a little bit more work, that might require reworking of the ceiling and lighting. $3 signs is what we're doing in two-in-one, but to the next level of more walls, more glassy-type walls, a lot of that work involves group study rooms, where you want some transparency so that that work is a little bit more costly, so we've assigned $3 to that. And then the red square kind of in the center there, that's adding a staff restroom, that again involves the plumbing work, so a little bit more involved. And how that all breaks down into a spreadsheet and assigning costs, this is the phase one, so this is the first floor work. We added up the square footage of each of those dollar sign areas, so you see the half-dollar is that youth services work. There's $2 signs in youth services, two in the multipurpose room, and four in the kitchen. We've assigned a square foot cost to each of those, based again on the level of renovation required, and that adds up to the number on the right. So the subtotal for the construction cost, we're estimating to be about 1.2 million for that phase one. Item 1.2 is the library interiors, so that's the loose furnishings, the metal shelving, things that move around. We've assigned a $40 per square foot budget over all the renovated areas to arrive at that budget for interiors. And then 1.3 are project contingencies. You know, this is very, very early concept design, and we don't know everything that's going to go into this design, so it's prudent to have a contingency. And we've assigned a 15% of the cost of work budget to cover those things that might change as the design develops. Along with that, there's a construction contingency of 5%, and that's for things that might be uncovered during construction, that might need to be addressed and addressed during construction. So all of those three items add up to what we call the cost of the work. It includes building construction, the library interiors, and contingencies. We are estimating that at 1,770,000. Below that line are soft costs, additional costs that are associated with the construction that you need to budget for. The technology and equipment, we do not have included, as we understand a lot of that will either be reused or budgeted out of, you know, operating budgets. 1.5 are fees and miscellaneous expenses, so those are the design fees, the architectural engineering fees, third-party estimating fees, potentially commissioning costs, and other miscellaneous expenses. We've assigned a 15% of the cost of work budget for that line item. So those two things added together, we are budgeting 2,036,000 for that phase one work. Of course, this is in 2025 dollars. We're not anticipating construction start until 2027, so we're adding an escalation factor, 4% per year, to get to that 2027 number of 2.2 million for phase one. Phase two takes the same approach, they're just different numbers, different areas of square feet assigned to each of those dollar signs. Following the same formula down, we've got the construction costs at 2.2, library interiors at 425,000, the same contingency percentages assigned, and so for phase two, we're estimating the cost of work at 3.1 million, adding the soft costs to that of the 15% for the fees and miscellaneous expenses. We get to the 3.6 number again in 2025 dollars, escalating that out to a projected construction date of 2029, we're up to 4.2 million for phase two. So again, we're very conceptual here, so we have to be kind of careful in how we assign costs to things and better to budget conservatively, I think, and have the proper contingencies in place down the road as the design develops, and you can do more detailed cost estimating, really going to dial and refine these numbers.
Can I have a couple please? You're on the, so nobody panic, please. So what we're focusing on right now really would be the phase one, so that would encompass the youth services space and the multipurpose room, which are two of our most heavily-used spaces in the library. I kind of took a run at some of our numbers right now. You know, our programming just keeps growing and growing. Right now, from, you know, January to May this year, to January to May last year, we're looking at like a 40% increase in our children's program attendance, and that kind of growth just really isn't sustainable in our, in our current space. So we would ideally love to parcel this out over like four or five years, you know, do a design for phase one, construction for phase one, design for phase two, construction for phase two. But what we're really focused on right now would be the youth services space, and these numbers would be heavily supplemented by grant funding. Kyle and Paul and I have already been talking about different options, either like Keystone Grants, which are through the state, and they are specifically reserved for library building projects, or, you know, a number of other things that the township has applied for in the past, so certainly not asking for that much money.
And towards that, and all these grant applications, whether it's this or anything else, to the extent that the design is more developed, the chances of receiving those grants is greater. So what you're going to get this fall, when we start to sit down and talk about the budget, is a request from the library to fund the design portion of the phase one project, and it will be part of the budget discussion and balanced against every other request that's out there.
Yeah.
And I think the thing that I would agree with Lacy, and I think the reason why the first floor is looked at as phase one, is that this end of the project is truly facing for patrons. Everything that is talked about in terms of improvements serves the needs of patrons, and I think that's where it makes sense to put our emphasis to start with.
And we're trying to be really careful about, you know, I think Renee and her team did a great job about, you know, reutilizing existing walls and existing spaces, like where we can. So the existing team room, you know, kind of keeping those walls, those windows, those doors, and just turning in that, turning that into a new programming space, so trying to save on construction costs where we can. And I, you know, they did a great job putting together the overall pricing and everything, and I do actually have a meeting with Lab Eight later this week to kind of see if we can, you know, as somebody who's worked with the township in the past, can we sharpen those numbers a little bit for like just the design of phase one and kind of see what we might be looking at. So, and then we'll start hopefully talking about grant opportunities. Do you guys have any questions? It's a lot of information, and there's a ton of information in your docket.
How much grant money do you think we could get for a project like this? My sense was...
I think you'd get 50% funding for the construction.
That would be my hope. Yeah, Keystone Grant's the one that I mentioned, which is just specifically for library renovation projects. You can get up to $750,000, that's the max, so my hope would be to, yeah, fund half of the construction projects. Any other questions?
Something to think about, guys.
Something to think about. Don't worry, I'll have you guys as a captive audience in September for the budget presentation. We'll get into the nitty-gritty then. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next will be audience comments. This is an opportunity for a member of the audience to address council for up to five minutes on an on-agenda item. You can say your name and address and write it down. Appreciate it.
My name is Bob Alridge. I reside at the 101 Trotters Court, Venetia, which is at the intersection of Trotters and Hill Place Road. The reason we are here, as several of our neighbors here in support, is a traffic calming petition on Hill Place Road. It's hard to believe, the last time we were here before council was 2011, 14 years ago, and at that point in time, we had a speeding issue, and we still have a speeding issue both with the motoring public and school buses. The posted speed is 25 miles per hour. When we were last here, the township did a study, and they determined that the average speed at that time, 14 years ago, was 42 and a half miles per hour in a 25 mile per hour zone. Very few people adhere to the 25 mile an hour speed limit. The problem, the danger lies in the number of hidden driveways, and the narrowness and the topography of Hill Place Road. Hard to believe, but there are 20 driveways on that road, on Hill Place Road, 20 driveways. A couple of speed issues I bring to your attention very briefly is, I was in the yard doing work one day, and I heard a small, what turned out to be a small car with an aftermarket muffler, and back in the day, we called them glass packs, whatever, and I could hear him coming, and when he crested the hill by Mr. Costello, Mr. Waters' driveways, he left the pavement. And when he came down, sparks flew from the muffler and the frame, one instance. Another one was a young fellow, last day of school, parents probably gave him the car to go to the school with his buddies. A contractor's pickup truck was coming from Thomas Road headed towards Springdale and was going to turn in on Hill Place to do some work for a neighbor. Well, he started turning in, and a car came over the hill, young fellow, excessive speed, couldn't bring it under control, veered to miss the pickup truck, and took out the fire hydrant. Not just the fire hydrant, but the hydrant connecting pieces, which stands five and a half feet tall, and water gushed, and he slid sideways through my yard, missed an oak tree fortunately, fortunately didn't land in my lake, which would have created another set of issues. So he was lucky, and we survived. And the last one was, my wife was coming home from Thomas Road towards Springdale, and a young fellow was tailgating, and when he crested the hill by the Bruce's driveway, and he saw a line of sight down past Trotters Court and up the hill, he passed my wife on that narrow road, you know, obviously doing excessive speeding. So a few instances, another neighbor's here had a couple more I think he'd like to relay to you. As for school buses, over the last 29 years that I've lived at this residence, unfortunately, we haven't observed any school buses traveling at speed limit. They just don't. And moreover, over the past 29 years, I've yet to see a patrol officer cite a school bus for speeding. I mean, it just doesn't happen. I'm not suggesting our drivers are unsafe, but they just speed in areas they should not speed. You know, trying to stop a 66-passenger school bus with 20 students aboard in a 25-mile zone when you're going 50 would become an issue. As a sidebar incident, I'd suggest any of you would like to, you could visit any of our yards, sit in an inconspicuous place in a lawn chair, you know, with a cup of coffee, and it wouldn't, you wouldn't finish your coffee until you realized that we have a problem on Hill Place Road. Excuse me.
Mind if I interrupt you for a second?
Pardon me?
Do you mind if I interrupt you?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
When this came in front of the traffic committee back in the day, I mean, if it was going, if the average speed was 40 something miles an hour, that would have been well within our parameters. What type of traffic calming measures did we undertake?
Well, I'm being caught...
I can explain that.
And I was going to say, I'm not going to be able to tell you what happened in 2021.
I'm on that committee?
Yeah, I don't remember back then.
But I can't remember what we did.
We suggested speed humps, but back in the day, they weren't quite in vogue as they are now. What the township did was paint a double yellow line the length of Hill Place and then groove it, thinking that would calm traffic. All they did was keep people in their lanes. It didn't slow anyone down.
They put white lines on the side to...
Yes, yeah.
And now it's coming back.
Yeah, but that's all they did 14 years ago. So I had a boss once that says, if you have a problem, bring it to me, but try to bring a solution as well, you know? So as for school buses, increasing patrols between school hours, like 7:30 to 9:00 in the morning, and 2:34 in the afternoon would obviously help, and a few warranted speeding tickets to bus drivers with fines in the $200 range and three points on their driver's license would permeate through the bus garage in very short order, and that would just, by human nature, slow things down. Out-of-pocket cash, excuse me, and points on their driving record, that could also result in employment issues, would get everyone's attention. Moreover, the next time the township and the school district get together, I would suggest that there be an agenda item for school bus speeding. As for the general, I'm motoring public, about two miles from Hill Place Road, as you probably all know, on Bauer Hill Road, there are three speed deterrance within a half a mile of each other. Two are on Bauer Hill Road, down for the intersection where Skina Trail comes down and headed towards Venetia Road. They are aggressive speed humps. You literally have to stop so you don't scrape the bottom of your car, and that works, obviously, that works. And then there's not, there's another one, recent one, it's on Bauer Hill Road going up the hill at the intersection of the new Eddie Plan of Homes at the Hardest View, and it's a slow, it's a raised intersection, not very high, with slow sloping ramps on, through, and off. They currently put, I don't know if it was the developer or the township, but they put a red brick border around it for aesthetic value, probably to let people know that it's a speed hump. But it's not the kind of speed hump on the lower portion of Bauer Hill, it's the kind of speed bump where you take your foot off the accelerator, tap your brakes a few times, proceed up, across, and down, and you're on your way, but it slows your vehicle down and it slows your, excuse me, your momentum. But it slows your vehicle down, and it slows your, excuse me, your momentum. And that's what we're looking for at the intersection of Hill Place and Trotters Court, the only road that connects onto Hill Place. And they also appear to be snowplow-friendly, up, across, and down. The old speed humps, the two down on Bauer Hill, probably, they're significant. And so I'm sure the school, the snowplow drivers have to be aware, you know? But we're not looking for that. In this particular section, we're looking for the slow, raised humps. Other than that, you know, my neighbors and I would be willing to meet with council or with staff or whatever. We're just concerned that, we've been here before, not a whole lot was done, maybe there's more latitude available to us now, but we're just asking the township to be proactive versus reactive. So that catastrophic incident doesn't make us all feel pretty badly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Paul, do we have a petition in hand, valid petition in hand, moving into the Traffic Calming Committee?
We would have to get a new petition. We don't have a petition right now.
We have it.
Oh.
Signed by every person on Hill Place Road.
Okay. Paul, the other thing you could do is, I don't know whether the school buses have that, so they could tell, what school bus, yeah, like what school buses were on that road, and they should be able to monitor their speed, like those big rigs.
I don't know that, but we have a good working relationship with the person in charge of the bus transportation for the school district, and we can talk to Lacy about this.
If you think about it, there are probably only five or six drivers who have routes on Hill Place Road.
That's what I'm saying, I wanted to see if they have that data. I don't know what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Evans. I live at 222 Hill Place Road, have been there since 2004. I moved to the township in 1964 with my family in Camelot. So we've been here a long, long time. We've seen a lot of changes in the township. Mr. Listuka built a 90-acre, it looked like a country club when he built the house on Hill Place Road, when there was only like four houses, the Wagners and a couple of other people that had houses, and he had a 90-acre horse farm. I was kind of a volunteer because I've had the most incidents in my yard of the people in the street. I've had seven wrecks in my yard since 2004, and despite the issues that you've had in 2011, that you've, improvements that you've made. First wreck was a kid turned his car sideways, jammed it against a tree in the hillside. He was afraid, it was 11:45 at night, was not drinking. Second incident was a kid flipped his car into the yard, upside down on top of the, upside down on top of the hood. I had him crawl out the back of the car because of the front, he couldn't get out either side of the car. The third incident was a guy came down the road at 6:45 in the morning on a Saturday, hit the pole in our yard, and then turned around. By the time I got out there, his girlfriend was screaming, "Billy, stop, stop." His wheels were turned to the left, and he was hopping the car up the street. So, very bizarre, very bizarre scene there. Just this past year, we've had three incidents in my yard, and recently, just three weeks ago, a guy smashed into a tree in the yard. The trees are substantial, so they kind of, they destroy their cars, they're totaled. The first one was, the first one was an incident in September where two kids were coming from, going to school, lost control of the car on the curve as you come down. Now, this is only two tenths of a mile from once you turn onto Springdale, so you have to really hit the accelerator to get to speed, to get to this point, because the turn is very gradual. It's not like a 90-point turn. So, they went, lost control of the car, came across, sheared off a telephone pole, and landed in the creek in the yard, which was towed out. A month after that, a lady came down the street at 7:00 in the morning and ran her car into the same tree, another tree in the yard, and put a V in her Honda SRV, CRV. And from there, she was towed and the car was totaled. Last week, a guy came in and, well, excuse me, three weeks ago, lost control of his car, went on the mud side of, crossed the road, went for like 35 yards in this mud, from all the rain we've had, still lost control of the car, and slammed his car into the side of this tree. And the tree's not really on the road, it's, you know, like seven, eight yards off the road, so they, and his car was totaled, he lost control of the car. He said he was downshifting. I don't know what that means, but he said that's what he was. So we're dealing with a couple different issues on the road. And the road, the traffic, the personality and the traffic of the road has changed since 1975 when Mr. Listuka started building his house. The neighborhoods that sit behind Spring Hill, Springdale Road, with the, you know, population growing, this used to be a tar and chip road, which was kind of like wagon wheels and, you know, very small, bent on the sides. Now it's been paved and whatnot, but it's not, it's still, the speed is definitely the problem on the road. So a possible solution, which Bob has already talked about, is having a gradual raised intersection. We don't want to lose the integrity of the street, because the street is still one of the nicest streets in the township, in the fact that when we started, when we grew up here, the township had an ordinance that you had to have at least a half an acre of land to build a house on. That has since gone by the wayside, but Hill Place Road still has that as, you know, the yards are big, lots are large, and the houses are average in this township, anyways. So, that would be great if we could get that down, because there's, like Bob said, there's two on Bauer Hill Road, that they don't take away from the beauty of the street. Mr. Wagner had mentioned that he has had three of his mailboxes destroyed, and he's lived on the street probably longer than anybody. From our standpoint, when you come down the street from Springdale, the section of Hill Place Road coming off of Springdale, like I said, it was, it's two tenths of a mile. There are two signs that say 25 mile an hour curve coming up, and it's a, like I said, it's a gradual curve, and then there's two arrow signs that's telling you that there's, that they kind of blend into the, into the makeup of, because the guy that lives on that side of the street has a horse farm right there. So he's got grazing, and he's got a huge barn, and people come down and nail his fences as they come down, before they come into the yard. So it's kind of a warning, Paul, that they're coming into the yard. So, nobody really wants a speed bump on their street, but I'm not sure how else we can get away from this. And we, I really don't want a bump, but possibly a hump, so that we could slow these things down. And like we said, the buses are, they're just, I mean, they're just outrageous as they come down the street. I get it. It's a Hill Place Road, the hills are steep, they let their feet off the brake, and they just come screaming down the street, both sides. So, we haven't had an accident there in that regard. So if we could get, before it gets to the turn in the straightaway, so it's only about a tenth of a mile, we could put a hump there to slow the traffic down a little bit. I just think that eight or nine fatality, or eight or nine accidents, four in the last year seems like a lot. I'm not sure if any of you had cars in your yards in the last year, but four seems like a lot to me. And I've lived here since 1964 and never had a car in my yard until this.
So do you have a traffic calming petition? Is that what I heard?
It was filed today. It was filed today.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So, I did witness the most recent accident drove past afterwards, and it had to be impressive the speed this person was going. And if there was someone in the passenger seat of that car, they would have been dead. It was impressive.
Well, with that petition in hand, the township will follow its policy, and there will be counts done by the traffic engineer, and it will go to the Traffic Calming Committee to review recommendations from the traffic engineer, and it'll go back out to the residents in terms of what the findings are and what's the proposed implementation.
Are there, are there speed trap lines on that road?
Yes.
Could we get a target?
They don't use them.
Can we get a targeted enforcement there for all?
And that's what, that's the first thing that'll happen.
Sure. See if you can get the counts like during the summer and then when the school starts.
But I think, I think, I think you're correct in saying the volume of all the residents
out there have increased so much, so that road has traveled so much more now.
This is from another neighbor. He wrote, he had a Maxima February 25 in his car, and, or somebody ran over his mailbox and then that, it's obliterated. You can see the pictures of the situation. So we just don't want a fatality. That's what we're really trying to do.
We understand, we have a petition. We'll discuss it.
All right. I appreciate your time.
No problem.
Yeah, if I may make a couple more comments regarding...
You have to state your name and the date of time.
Walter Strats. I live at 116 Trotters Court. I've been a resident in Peters Township since 1989. I lived on Trotters Court for, since 2002. And as Steve so eloquently put, yeah, if you look at the number of new developments that have taken place since even, you know, the early 2000s, the volume of traffic has increased as well. I enjoy the outdoors, I enjoy running, and my slant on it is just that I know through the years, that road not only is used for vehicular traffic, but also pedestrians, running, biking, cyclists. So, in my mind, not only are the motor vehicle operators at risk wrecking their car because of the high speed, but there's a couple choke points on that road as well. At the top, where the road just narrows, your visibility is impaired, and there's been a number of times where I'm lucky to be standing here today, having, not having survived, you know, a crash with a car, because I had to jump off the road because it was coming at me so quick, and my head's on a swill every time I want to run that. And you may say, "Well, just don't run it." Well, it's a nice loop for me, because I could get on Trotters Court, go to Just About, go to Siena Trail, go on Springdale, and come back down, and I got my three and a half miles with varying terrain. So, you know, from a personal standpoint, yeah, I would like to see further study as your council has recommended on perhaps furthering ways to reduce traffic flow. I know the two signs just, I think while they're, give the driver a sense of how fast they're going, I don't know that they pay much attention to them. And one other comment, I know for a fact that when you read, when this was presented in 2011, thereabouts, at times there was an officer placed in Trotters Court. I know that because I wasn't running the loop one day, I was running my little circle in the Trotters Court, and Jimmy Stevic was there, some of you may remember him from the task, and I was running, and I'd stop and chat, and he was timing somebody when they put the lines in. He says, "Can't talk, got to go." And he went right after that person that was speeding. So, maybe more incidents, or maybe more presence of a force there. And you can, you can kind of hide so the people coming down from Springdale, by the time they're down the hill, they're caught. The other way, they can probably see the car, but nevertheless, it might be a deterrent, because you get enough chatter going, and we could put it on Facebook, "Oh, yeah, I was nabbed. Oh, this person was nabbed," and it might help as well. But I think something more of a permanent solution, such as the speed bumps, might be what's needed. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name's Don Wagner. I live at 296 Hill Place Road. Lived there for 50 years with my wife, Arlene. Have two children living on that road, Lisa and Suzie. They live at 240 and 260 Hill Place. And over the period of years, we went, as Steve had mentioned, from a tar and chip, it was a gravel road, then a tar and chip, to an asphalt road. School buses have always gone fast on that road. I mean, this isn't anything new. The traffic in general, though, has increased substantially, and the disregard for safety is completely out the window. My mailbox is three-by-three brick, solid. I've had it demolished three times in the last 15 years. The last, when a young lady ran off the road coming uphill Place Road from Just About, hit, went into the ditch on the right-hand side of the road, hit my driveway, and then hit the mailbox and drove at 75 feet into the neighbor's yard. Now, 25 miles an hour, I don't think she would have moved the mailbox, you know? And the same thing was true, a gentleman came down from Springdale, came around the bend, ran off the road, jerked his wheel, got back on, and then swerved back across and demolished the mailbox. And the other one was coming up from Springdale, or from Just About as well. But the near incidents that are on those roads, because I'm out there all the time working on the fence or working in the woods, or I'm retired, so I'm going down to get the mail, people come up that road, and when they hit, I'm probably 200 feet from Springdale Road, and when they hit where my mailbox is, even if I'm standing there, they floor it, and then they slam on their brakes when they get to the stop sign. I mean, it's just insane the way they drive. And I think, I'm afraid like Steve Evans just said, that somebody's going to get killed. It's amazing it hasn't happened yet. And I disagree with him in one regard. I think traffic calming is good with the slightly raised and slow them down a little bit, but I think the ones that really work are like on Hayes Road and on Just About Road, as it goes out onto, as it goes out onto the main road, Venetia Road. You slow down for those. I mean, you can't just charge them. And I think there needs to be something at the bottom of each hill to make these people slow down, and I think it's going to save lives in the long run. I think without common sense, which I don't think exists in the current generation, and without respect for the law, which I don't think exists in the current generation, I think we need to do something that forces them to comply. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If we didn't discuss, Don, you disagree with me at any moment. I'm free to eat. So, I'll put that in notes if you could. Thank you. Thanks, ladies. Thank you.
Maureen Jones, East McMurray Road. I see from the digital display down by the high school that East McMurray Road's closing as of July 7th. Are we going to receive any information on that as to where the road's going to be closed and so forth? Because those of us who live near this construction site, we need to know what's going on.
Well, what's happening is, the intersection itself is closing, so on the northern side, Fulton, on the southern side, pretty much where you see the end of the construction's occurring right now. So the entire intersection is closed in all directions. It'll be that way for the remainder of the summer.
And where are the road closed ahead signs going to be? Otherwise, they're going to be coming up and turning around in all our driveways, in particular, like Big G and that.
Well, they're out there right now already, and, but I fear what your concern is, is going to happen, at least initially, because my experience is that people don't necessarily believe that...
That the road's actually closed, yeah.
What is the state detour? Is it all the way to 19?
19. So, just in time for them to tear up 19 in the center lane.
So somebody coming up McMurray Road from St. Clair would have had to have made the writing, was that Johnston?
Hayes.
Is Hayes a state road?
Nope, Hayes is not a state road.
So PennDOT has to use state roads.
Yeah, my guess is it's East McMurray Road to 19 back to Valley Brook. That'd be my guess. And that will not be the detour people will use. The detour they'll use is whatever shows up on Google Maps or Waze.
We haven't put the connection to Manaway in yet, have we?
We have not.
We probably should hold, we probably should hold off on that then until the project's done.
Yeah, we have an emergency connection that allows access.
The other question is, how long is it going to be closed?
Till sometime in early September.
Early September.
That's what they tell us.
I thought I heard October, but maybe that's somebody being a realist.
Okay.
We're actually running a week ahead of schedule on that project, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We learned something here, too, so. Any other audience comments? Okay, the same number moving to unfinished business list with a few items, there appears to be a warrant to contract Crane, Langer, and Associates and Company for various, for consulting services regarding insurance coverage.
So, back on April 28th, council tabled the award of a contract to Crane and Langer for consulting services related to the purchase and administration of various insurance coverages. Since then, we have not been able to identify any other independent insurance consultants. And to partly address council's concern, I've invited Dan Bussar, who's a managing partner from Crane, to come to speak to council. You know, my position remains unchanged. I think the value of this service is that it ensures the township's insurance coverages are appropriate in light of our business activities, particularly with regard to the scope and limits of coverage and exclusions and deductibles. I think it also ensures that the cost of the coverage is reasonable as determined by a competitive bidding. a competitive bidding process. And finally, I think it helps us in a minute resolving significant claim, particularly those under unique circumstances. We don't have, have this knowledge in-house and I don't think it's reasonable to think that you're going to find that inside of most municipal governments of our size. And it really is a specialized area. To give you, for instance, we just renewed our, our policy with regard to cyber coverage. The broker has given us a new, a new insurance company with a new, with a new policy. And I am not equipped to tell you whether that coverage is adequate and sufficient for the, for the risk that's there. That's why you need somebody who has some specialized knowledge of insurance. So Dan, the.
So let me save time here. I mean, these are the same arguments we had last time. I don't know why we have to have a whole complete, you know, presentation of this. I'm going to make a motion that we award a contract to Crane, Langer and Company for consulting services related to the purchase of various insurance coverages.
I'll second.
Okay, motion to the second, any further discussion?
You want to.
You want, you want, you want the money, right?
You did a great job.
I haven't do the work. It's in, yeah, listening to roadway hazards and the sovereign union exception to it and the fact that you have five-minute umbrella on top of Woodland Primary, we've got a lot to talk about, not today.
Motion to the second, all favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you for being very patient. Thanks for the first aye. All right.
Now we heard all that speeding stuff, we're going to need a lot more.
Hope you were taking notes.
So I think the next two items on unfinished are both related to the same item regarding subdivision in the driveway on Bauer Hill Road.
So this was an agenda item on May 27th. At the time, there were concerns expressed. First, the failure to notify adjacent residents for the request of a departure. A letter's been sent out to all property owners within 300 feet of the parcel as notifications tonight's agenda item. Secondly, this was concerned expressed with regard to the location of the driveway. Mr. Modri believes that there's adequate site distance across the proposed lot. That being said, and having discussed this with him, what he is suggesting, and I would agree, is that the point in time when the, the building permits are an issue, that we ask Mr. Modri to look at the specific locations of those driveways to determine how that they can be put in as safely as possible.
Why does he need to do that if he's already determined that there's sufficient site distance?
Well, I would, I think it would be prudent to have him look at it. It isn't kind of cost much and, and I think it can make sure that they're spaced far enough apart, particularly the two new driveways, so that they're not on top of each other.
Did we ever figure out, Paul, how the other one got built then without?
The McCroby subdivision had departures. And that's, and that's why it was, you know? And I, I think it's worth noting that property owners don't have a right to departure from regulations. Council has complete discretion as to whether or not they're granted. That being said, in my memory, I do not recall at any time in a simple subdivision creating one additional lot, that a departure wasn't granted. And I would, would agree with the individual who spoke in opposition the last time, that in essence, if you grant these departures all along the road, eventually what you have is what we are trying to avoid. But my belief is that that regulation went into place to avoid things like you see on Turkey Cliff, where you have a developer come in with a plan.
Absolutely.
And they face the plan towards the street. It was, I don't think it was ever intended to stop individual property owners from doing this kind of thing where you have a, a one lot subdivision, so.
I agree with you, Paul, but I mean, at some point, it does become a problem. There's a regulation there and if we're not going to follow it, then why do we even have it?
And I can't recall any time where we've had one like this, where you have a street on one side and now you've already got two driveways over there. You're going to have two more, plus the house going back up towards Juniper Woods, that old house there that sold last year. I'm sure somebody's going to tear that down and want to put another new house there, which means you're going to be talking about one, two, you know, six driveways in about 600 feet there.
I mean, I would be inclined not, I would be inclined to grant relief here with the condition that the placement of that driveway, but I'm not going to be so inclined going forward, at least in this area.
The McCroby subdivision, was there any opposition from neighbors?
No.
How many new driveways did that put in? Two?
Two. But your thought process was correct, that it was, you know, deference to Ted Taylor's development of all those driveways exiting.
And we need to look at this too, and when we're doing the comprehensive plan again, there has to be a way that we can reduce the number of these driveways we're having on these main roads.
Well, and the one, you know, and this is something to keep, keep in mind, in this particular case, you can do this subdivision and have only one driveway, but it requires a shared driveway.
And developer won't do that?
Well, I don't know that. I haven't asked that question. But I can tell you, our experience with the shared driveways is not a good one because what it all, all ultimately ends up with is down the road at some point in time, two property owners not getting along and not being able to maintain. No, that's not our problem, though. That is not our problem, but it is a problem in the community.
I mean, when you're buying, if you want to buy the house and you're sharing a driveway with your neighbor, you're taking the risk that the next guy that buys the house is a guy you can't get along, or girl you can't get along with.
Do you want to press for a shared driveway, driveway options? I'm not big on those shared driveways. I think if you get the wrong neighbor, it could really be bad.
And I mean, at some point, we have to be able to do something to stop.
We do. We have an ordinance.
So why, so you know, every time, but it seems like anytime somebody comes in here for a departure, we just say, fine, you know?
Say no.
And then I'm griping at the zoning board about handing out variances. I am going to vote no, but I need somebody to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the departure from regulations.
Oh, if Mrs. Merrill wants to speak.
We can, motion will be made. Somebody wants to second it?
From regulations containing township subdivision land development ordinance restricting creation of a new lot along Collector Street as shown on proposed 501 Bauer Hill Road subdivision 20.
Wait, I'm, I'm sorry, I lost track.
I just read what was.
Okay, so you're moving to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay. Mrs. Merrill.
Did you get your second?
Yeah, Mr. Ross did.
Good evening, council. Monica Merrill, 105 Walnut Drive, right there, third house in on the left. I sent you all an email, I don't know if you've received it, outlining some concerns that I have. There's a lot of things going on there on Bauer Hill Road. The two new homes that were built, 521 and 475, the modular home and the white brick, had new roads put on, new driveways put on that didn't exist before. How that happened, we're still not clear. This property was one home, that home had been vacant since before we moved in, 20 years, was sold. Certainly the gentleman has a right to develop it. The property, while it's a half an acre, is very long and narrow. If you have another picture, you can show that. The frontage might be 100 feet, but it's a very long, narrow lot. And the driveway that is shown right there actually looks closer to the other driveway at 521. And then the driveway on the far left, it's a Fife House, it's currently vacant, maybe 475 or 495, I don't know for sure the address, is on the property line. So this is my concern. You have a driveway that's right here, and I mean right there. The pink stakes are along the driveway. You have a driveway that's actually more over this direction, and then you have all these in between. Mr. Modri might have measured that and think there's site distance. I just think it's going to be very tight. I also think that there's an issue with the speed, as the gentleman beforehand talked about. Bauer Hill School is just beyond the 475, across from 475. That lot goes, driveway goes right into the school district lot. If you live on Walnut Drive or Bauer Hill Road and want to go anywhere in the morning during school, first bell, during kindergarten exchange, or going, during dismissal, you might as well be sitting and waiting for a traffic jam. So all the additional driveways coming out are going to be traffic added to that. As the gentleman mentioned, speeding, Bauer Hill Road is 25 miles an hour. That lovely little hump in front of Just About really doesn't slow anybody down. As he said, it's a nice little gradual slide. People don't slow down. They're already doing 25, 35, 40, and they come whipping into Walnut Drive. So they're going to keep going past to the school. That's another concern. One of the other things I have a concern about, and I'm really sorry about this with planning, but I think people tell us they're going to build something and then they build whatever the heck they want anyway. There's a sign on the one lot for a house that's going to be built coming soon, $1.4 million. And if the sign is any indication of the house, I don't know how they're going to fit in on that lot. Because it's extremely wide, it's one of the McMansion type homes that are over in Hamlet of Springdale. Again, people can build what they want. I just think that, that right now, we're trying to squeeze a lot of things into a small piece of property. And while that's a half an acre, the configuration of that is not going to lend itself to a very large home, plus a driveway. The shared driveway might be an answer. Whether they do it, I don't believe they would. Two other things beside traffic. I think the other concern, when they built the modular home at 475, they actually had to prop up the utility lines. If you drive past there, you would see the utility lines are extremely low hanging. Whether that's going to be a problem for construction or people entering and exiting, I don't know, but it's a consideration that should be taken into consideration. Personally, again, there's a lot of traffic on Bauer Hill Road. People speed, people come flying into our plan speeding. I think adding additional driveways up and down at Collector Road is a bad idea. That being said, I do appreciate the man has a right to try to develop his property. So I hope that you consider perhaps denying that request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Who is this guy?
Keith Higgins, resident Peters, 308 Hetero Drive. Just a couple of points. This driveway, this existing driveway is a survey location. That, that is not over here. That is, our, my guys in the field located that driveway and that's where it is in the plan. And that's where Modri did his site distances. So that's an existing driveway. All we're going to be doing is asking for an additional driveway on the new lot we're creating, which is going to be Lot 1. And Monica was accurate, there is a sign on the lot by the builder that is going to spend 1.4, sell the house for 1.4 million dollars. But the size and the image that's on that sign, it could, it could change 50 times. But I do know we have.
They always do.
Yeah, but we have a fantastic planning department that would never allow a, a house to be built over set back lines. And if we stayed out that house, I'd be buying that one.
Well, the lot's only 100 feet wide, right? I can't talk with the numbers here, so it's only 100 feet, right?
And at the building line is 100 feet. So we match all the zoning required.
So you've got 70 feet for your house, right?
Correct. Also.
And there's a sign up, but there has not been an application for a building permit. Or would we accept it until?
All we're dealing with here, and we're kind of getting ahead of ourselves, is all we're dealing with here is a subdivision. There's no buildings proposed, there's no permits applied. And another correction is these are one acre lots, not half acre lots. So the client found an opportunity in the township that I sent planning a tar point. We've already beautified that, that area. The house that was on that lot was falling apart, was probably a hazard. It was demolished. The lot is so much nicer than it is now. And then with, so the proposal is to sell the two lots. My client is not the builder. Two builders have agreed to buy them. And I'd say we're going to be looking at $2 million in real estate in that little piece of Bauer Hill, in our little piece of the world here in Peters Township. I think it's a great opportunity. We're looking at all these bills from libraries. If we're not growing and the township generating new revenue, we're going to struggle to pay for all these amenities that we all want. So one new driveway, but again, where that driveway is, if this subdivision is approved tonight, there's a long way between getting approval for two site plans by, by the planning department.
Well, somebody may or may not be thinking about a governor's driveway for this site, so.
So working with the township and following the permit and getting comments back on governor driveways and all that, I'm sure the builder will, you know, to build this house, I see a governor driveway would look pretty nicer.
And that does raise another question.
Is that one driveway?
Is that considered one driveway or two driveways? Because you have two entrances on the street, right?
Right, again, we're getting ahead of ourselves. There's no, there's no plan.
Again, that's why I would condition approval of the departure upon our traffic engineer determining what's safe in terms of those driveways.
I would say there's no problem with that. I did have one other point I wanted to make. I can't remember now. Yeah, again, it's just a subdivision creating two one acre lots. Also cleaning up, if that's the right word, word, Mr. Lauer, the dedication of Bauer Hill Road, cleaning not that often. It's, we've been down this road many a time. Oh, I do now, to your point, I've been involved in two previous modifications for driveways on Collector Roads, and they've been approved before the agenda item was read out. So that's how we've dealt with these modifications in the past. Maybe we look at a man in the zoning and instead of a modification, maybe it's a variance in the future. That could be a possibility, but you're the attorney on me, so.
Any questions?
The council first.
Done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was here a month ago, so you heard most of the points I wanted to make. So still asking that, that we not approve this subdivision. Few questions as we kind of get into the details here.
You're asking not for the subdivision, but the departure.
Yeah, no, no departure, yeah. Couple questions. One is, I never got a clear answer on where the open space set aside is, not only for this subdivision, but for the McCroby subdivision. It's my understanding that as it's written in the ordinances, that in low density, anytime you're creating a new lot, you've got to set aside 0.7 acres of open space. And I don't see any open space in this subdivision.
0.7.
0.7.
And as a matter of practice, the township has not accepted open spaces that are the minimus in size. They're, they're, what are you talking about on that, on something that's two acres?
I mean, it says 0.7 right here in the table.
We need to fix. We need to fix that.
Yeah, we need to fix that because that's...
What did it say that?
Different section says .07.
Okay, well, this is, this is the low density. So, again, I, I don't see anything here. We don't want to accept a, a little one. It still wasn't accepted with the McCroby subdivision that was surrounding this. So, it gets back to the point of, how many times are we going to just allow departures and then just allow them to stack up in a small area with driveway upon driveway upon driveway? We saw, you know, just this evening on Hill Place, the, the concerns, and we've got the same thing going on here on Bauer Hill. And Mrs. Merrill is absolutely right that, that, you know, several times during the school day, it's all backed up. The other question I have is, I'm a little bit confused because it's 99-foot lot, and then another spot, we're saying it's over 100 foot on, on the, the frontage, so it's just a, it's not significant, but it's a small enough difference.
Keith, you want to explain that?
Yeah, so, I'm correct, I'm wrong, but we need 100 feet at the building line.
Correct.
So, the building line is 50 feet off the right of way. And if you measure that, there's a dimension, we can't read it on the screen, it's 100, it's over 100 feet.
And then the last question I had is, did Mr. Mondry and his traffic site distance study do anything along the site distance with Walnut Drive?
I, based upon what I heard in the meeting, the, viewing the video from the meeting, I asked Mr. Mondry to go back out and take a look at this, and Mr. Mondry is of the, still of the opinion that you can put driveway safely on there, and he's well aware of the configuration of Walnut Drive and its reference to this. Again, that's why if, if council chooses to approve this, it's my recommendation that Mr. Mondry take a look at the specific location of both driveways to make sure that they work along, along Bauer Hill and the through that, he would say.
So, so my concern with that is, and I mentioned this last time, with the topography, actually, you want to flip back to the one that has the satellite image? The topography, Bauer Hill's the high point. It goes downhill this way and downhill this way. And I went over there this evening, and I stood, you know, in this area, down the hill. If you'd be coming up the hill on a driveway, you cannot see cars coming up Walnut Drive at all. So, yes, you can see, if you come up to, to here, you can see up Bauer Hill, down Bauer Hill, fine. But, I mean, coming out of my driveway, I've got to look up Bauer Hill Road to see cars whipping in off of Bauer Hill Road into Walnut. So, these driveways would have the same, you know, issue that I deal with, is that I, you've got to look three ways. And I don't see with the topography how you have anything much more than, you know, a, a few feet off the road going back down the hill then. So, it's, I think, I think it's a, a safety concern from, from a standpoint of, there's just not much field of vision there.
I, I would say, and I don't know for sure, but I would say the new driver will come So, from there, here's the property line, there's 100 feet, 200 feet.
Keith, is that the existing driveway right there? It's like the...
This is the existing one area.
Right.
Yeah, that comes down, was long, and then it kept that, that house. There's a lot of the old house that was torn down.
And Keith may disagree with me, but quite frankly, when both of these building permits would come in, I would be asking Mr. Mondry to just find out whether or not that's the safe location. And the mere fact that there's a driveway there onto a township road doesn't mean they guaranteed that.
Right.
This is different than if it was on a state road, you'd have a guarantee of that location.
Oh, yes, I, I don't like that. But I would say, you know, no issues with township approval on the driveway locations.
Okay. Thank you.
Audience comments on that? Okay, let's move a motion and a second on, on the floor. Mr. Lauer, can you call roll on that, please?
Mr. Prosko?
Yes.
Mr. Rousen?
Yes.
Mr. Arcuri?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Cozer?
Nay.
Mr. Steigl?
Nay.
So, I'm just going to pass four to two. And then move into approval of the subdivision. Do we need to discuss much on this one?
It beats the township's requirements in terms of all, all dimensions, so...
Do we want to make a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion. Approve the 501 Bauer Hill Road subdivision plan as shown in drawings prepared by Kisa and Surveying and Mapping Inc., dated April 10, 2025, for MTK Development LLC, subject to the conditions recommended by the Planning Commission, as well as approval of the driveway location by the township.
Second. Motion and a second on that. Any further discussion on this item? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Nay.
Okay, that carries five to one. Now, let's see. Finally, moving to new business. First will be request to allow access across an open space parcel in the Timberlake Plan.
So, what's before council tonight, relatively simple, straightforward question, is whether or not you would permit access across a piece of land that we own a easement on for the purposes of developing two lots on the top of Shady Chris Court. We have notified the residents surrounding this, as well as the homeowners association. And again, this is one where council has complete discretion as to whether or not they're granted or, or not. I know Mr. Victor's here. I'm sure he wants to speak.
Not necessarily.
I've never known you not to want to speak.
Stephen Victor, Victor Wutzel Associates. The strip of ground that we are talking about is asked to be acquired by Dan and Len Lutz, and the purpose of that is so they can have access to the green and blue parcels there that would be part of a subdivision of their property. And they already have paid and received an assigned agreement with the homeowners association. I have a copy of that document if you would like to see it. And so, it really is just a matter of you're accepting the open space so it can be given to the homeowners association, so we can have this right of access. And we understand that it would be conditioned upon just two lots. There's significant frontage there, but we want to restrict it that there would just be the two lots.
And what I do not know is whether there's anybody else in the audience who lives on...
My seat partner there. We gave buddies to see me. She lives.
Right beside the blue one.
She lives right here, and I explained to her that the area out behind her house would not be disturbed because any construction would occur around in this area. This narrows down too much, so any construction would occur where any houses located here.
So, the one thing I think council needs to understand is that if you grant permission for, to have access across this, they will be back to you for a departure from regulations because our ordinance requires that all subdivisions have frontage on a public street, and this will not, it will have frontage on that, on that strip. So, when they bring the subdivision back to us, you'll first have to grant them a departure to be able to do this.
Okay.
If you do take action, we're prepared to file that subdivision probably within the next month and a half, so you, we will be back soon.
Steve, it's been a while since I looked at this book. From my recollection, the HOA owns the strip, and we control the access over it.
That is, that is my understanding.
So, we don't necessarily have an easement. We, the township did a good job when you approved that plan, is to have the ability to say, you up or down on access on this plan. So, it's not necessarily defined right of way, just control.
Yes.
Well, if you have an agreement with the HOA, it doesn't seem like we have any opposition, so I'll make a motion that we grant the Lutz's access across the property for the purpose of creating two residential lots, with the understanding that if, at, at a future date, a departure from regulations will be required in order to subdivide the property.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion from council or the audience? See, now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? That carries six.
That's conditioned upon there only being two lots, right?
No further subdivision.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, seems that's evident from the plan.
Thank you.
Sorry to make you wait so long, Mr. Victor. Next item will be authorization to perform emergency work at 107 Single Tree Drive.
The purchasing manual allows the manager in an emergency situation to authorize a purchase. I've authorized Mr. Zomitis to employ the services of Sularc Excavating and Take a Project on a time and materials basis. What this is, is a pipe that has collapsed, it's a cross pipe on the street. It has failed to the point that the opening's only about eight inches. Mr. Zomitis's concern is that if, in fact, we, these heavy rains we've been having, we could have flooding on people's property. Council doesn't need to do anything with this, except acknowledge the fact that that purchase is made.
Yeah, not, not willing, Mr. Lauer, to give me a courtesy call, and that's why I was aware of it.
Actually, Mr. Steigl, it wasn't a courtesy call, it's required by the...
Yeah, we all know.
All right, to award a contract for the 2025 detention voluntary rehabilitation project.
So, the little bit is Sularc Excavating, it's Mark's recommending...
We use them regularly, don't we?
Yep.
All right, I'll make a motion that we award the contract to Sularc Excavating in the amount of $55,722 for the rehabilitation of stormwater detention funds.
Second. Okay, have a motion and a second on that. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Here is six, nothing. Authorization to add a Roth option to the 457B retirement plan.
So, this, this is not anything that costs the township any, any money. It's a, just provides an option within our 457 plan, which is a voluntary plan for retirement savings. So...
All right. I move that Peters Township Council authorized township manager to sign an application authorizing the offering of a Roth option for the Mission Square 457 plan.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Six, nothing on that. And the final item under new business will be authorization to renew a contract with in Peters Township Community Magazine.
So, we've been using in, in community since 2009, how they provide six magazines a year. The current contract will represent a 12% increase in the current rates. This is the second time there's been an increase since 2009, and when I speak to the publisher, it has to do with their cost of printing and their cost of mailing, and so it's...
Make a motion, we award a contract in Peters Township Community Magazine to publish and deliver a township magazine for the next two years.
Second. Okay, motion and a second on that. Any further discussion from council or the audience? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? That's six, nothing. Mr. Cozer, payroll bills?
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the payroll and bills. I find them to be in order. I move they be approved as submitted.
Second. Motion and a second to pay the bills. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Six, nothing. The correspondence, we just have two notification letters, I think they're, yeah, both from Rangey sources concerning gas wells that are going to be going into neighboring communities.
That's pretty standard.
Yeah, standard. Reports, does anybody want to discuss any, anything on reports?
Nope.
I thought the police report was fun. Only one of them is funny.
Okay, miscellaneous.
One of the things that's sitting at your desk is a draft of the letter outlining the conditions that will be placed on the building permit for the colocated tower on Druid Drive. I think it pretty much encompasses what we had suggested, plus what we had heard from council at that point in time.
Number one doesn't read right at the end. Says the impact on residents, discuss any other pertinent issues. And, and it does not provide the notice that they're supposed to give to, they were supposed to give that construction timetable to all the residents, and then if the timetable was modified, they were supposed to do it again, and they were supposed to have a contact information on that notification.
Okay, so, one of the things it does say in the, in the next part of the contract will provide written notice of the closures to all homes on Druid Drive between where the road intersects with fireside, at least one week prior to the closure. I, I, we can modify this to...
Well, I mean, that's, that's what, you know, I mean, that's what it said in the minutes. It said, they're supposed to give them that construction timetable prior to, you know, prior to the construction commencing.
And, and a number to call.
And a number to call, with a contact person.
That's a big thing.
Now, the minutes didn't say that, when I, it just said, Mr. Arcuri said blah, 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 but I did say that about the contact person. But there is a, there is something in here in this draft that says something about having a contact person on John somewhere.
Yeah, but, but the way this is written, is the contact to the township so that we have somebody, it isn't...
Well, I think we need them to have to notify those residents.
Yeah, I think they were on board for that, and I think that the residents were adamant about having a phone number, who to call.
Yeah, and they weren't complaining. And that one guy that was the actual supervisor and the crew that was going to do the work, he, he didn't have a problem with it, so I, I think we should, that should be a condition, to be honest with you.
I would acknowledge the fact that I did have an opportunity to talk to their structural engineer, who reviewed, and he answered my questions, and I was satisfied with the discussion that we had. Yeah, we're, we're not yet in a position to issue them a building permit. The person doing the plan review, which is CodeSys, has some concerns, and they're, they're waiting for them to respond to their concerns, so...
What, what is the nature of those concerns?
It's really more submitting the proper documentation for the foundation.
I just have one item, so, Mr. Lauer, we, I asked you two weeks ago about, around about at Venetia Road. Since that time, I've had a few people asking me about what's going on down there, so if you could just pretty much give us a sense of what meetings have occurred, what, where that sits right now, what's...
There's only been one meeting. It was at the request of the developer, as well as Representative Mahaly and Senator Harlott's office. And what the developer's looking at is the, the possibility of getting state funding to do intersection improvements down there. And what they're looking at doing, which is perhaps the most appropriate way to do this, is to get that intersection put on the 12-year program for the state of Pennsylvania. The problem with that, and I don't think they understand how that process works, you're talking many, many years before that intersection improvement would, would occur, if in fact it gets on the, the 12-year program. You know, I point to the roundabout here, and the intersection improvement that's occurring up above, and those were approved when Mike Celestri was still manager here. And, you know, that's 2016, it was actually before that. So, that is not a quick process. I don't see that occurring. If in fact they can get it on to the 12-year program, I think that's the, the township's benefit, because it's the only way that, that improvement down there will occur. The reason they have an interest is that PennDOT told them that, under the, under the, the current situation, that, that intersection fails, and they will not permit development of that property until there's improvement.
That's okay, that's okay with me. I, I had a question for you, Paul. I heard on the radio this evening when I was driving out of work that there were, there were like $8 million available for, from the gambling to the municipalities in Washington County. How do they dole that out? I assume we apply for it?
Well, with the, first of all, every year, the township, as a matter of course, gets a portion of that money, it's a few hundred thousand dollars, that's given to us without any strings attached. Then in addition to that, there's an application process that, that normally September, October of the year, and we've had projects funded through this. It's the local, I'll say, grant program. And then what has recently transpired, and this has to do, I think, a lot with, with the sports gambling, there is a large pot of money that's been generated for the state of Pennsylvania, fortunately that's given out based upon grant applications. And a, for instance, is the reason why you, that Field 1 over at Peterswood Park, that turf, that's a $500,000, I'll say, grant. So, that, that occurs once a year as well.
Thank you. Move for adjournment? Is there anything for vexed agenda that anybody would like to... Do we have another executive session?
Even though you had an executive, I have...
Even though you had an executive, I have, sure, just I need to talk about one thing.
Right.
Are you in meetings adjourned?